Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the same aye. Pose the same sign. Turned that. Please certify the adjutant's position, please.
Okay, I will lay it in the air.
Alright, thanks sir. Mr. Zach Weid?
Yes.
Mr. Boski?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Miss Compton?
Yes.
This time I'll take a motion to appoint ten ball certificate six school board for the remainder of the current year. Thank you sir, do have a second?
I'll say it again.
Thank you sir, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. And I think we'll turn it over to Mr. Reynolds now. Mr. Boski would come forward, please.
You solemnly swear that I am and should support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the Commonwealth of Parliament, and shall pay tribute and partially discharge all individuals who have a bond with the rest of the county school board according to the best rule of law.
I'm there.
Congratulations.
You magnify it, please.
I wish to honor and to be to be parents for a position in the name of the Lord. Thanks, Mr. Cook.
Agreed. Mr. Boski, we'd like to take the opportunity to let you mictimize, but you can see we've got a full household. All I can tell you is, we're gonna roll, so. Congratulations, sir, welcome to board. This time, if you would, please stand for the occasion, Mr. Rustic will lead, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance to him, Mr. Zach Weid, please.
Let's bow to the Lord, Brian. Look down at gracious heaven and Father, we bow here to your presence tonight. We want to thank you for this beautiful day that you allowed us to be part of. Father, we want to thank you so much for all the blessings of life that you send our way, and Father, we thank you for each one of these children that's going to be recognized tonight, and for you, blessing in their endeavors as they go through their schools, and you give them wisdom each and every day, and give them strength. Father, we thank you for that. We ask you tonight to be with us as far as they conduct their business. They would do it in a professional manner, that they would do it with the wisdom that you give them, and the guidance that you give them each day. Thank you again for the opportunity to bow on your presence again. Keep us safe as we return home tonight, and we'll give you the honor and the praise of the Lord, which in your precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Let us lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Dr. Brown, do you have any adjustments to make to the agenda? No, sir. Do any of the board members have any thing they want to add or change or modify the agenda this time? If not, I'll take a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Turned that. Takes us down to the minutes. We have two. We had the approval of a regular monthly meeting. The minute's there, I'd like to take a motion, we just made the reading those.
So, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir, do have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Turned that. This time I'll take a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
So, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir, do have a second?
I'll say it again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zach Weid. All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Turned that. Approval of the public hearing, special call meeting, I'll take a motion, we just made the reading those.
So, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir, do have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, I'll take a motion, we approve the minutes as presented. Special call meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zach Weid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Turned that. Dr. Brown, work for recognition, please, if you would.
Yes, sir, I invite Mr. Fledge to come and join, and we have quite a list tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Chairman of the board, we do have a lot of students, and we're happy to serve them for you tonight. Russell County's been well represented, a lot of contests, and we want to start with Castlewood High School, state forensics team. We'll invite Ms. Jenkins, forensic coach, if she's here, and these students and their parents. Brienne Long, Lily Sanders, McKenna Jordan, Dylan Mullins, Skylar Roberson, Cassidy Smith, Angie Patton, Zach Owens, Ethan Gorman, and Troy Long.
Parents, I'd like for you to come and stand behind your two.
I know that Ms. Roberson and her coaches are attracting some of your students, I guess, so she's a kind able to be here. She can go out and speak to you.
Again, every time I'm here before you, I brag on our kids. I feel like I'm the luckiest principal in the county. I truly believe that. I have the most wonderful students at my building, I have a wonderful staff at my building. These students go out and represent us every time they go out, whatever they do, on a daily basis in the hallways, they're representing the school well. I can't say enough about them. I'm very proud of each and every one of them. I love them all, and I hope they know that. I'm just very proud of them.
Okay, presented to Troy Long. Castlewood High School by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning fifth place in the humorous duo at the 2018-19 BHS Area Group One A State Forensic Tournament. I believe this is his humorous duo, Ethan Gorman. Alright, Ethan. Presented to Ethan Gorman, fifth place in humorous duo, 2018-19 BHS Area Group One A State Forensic Tournament. Zach Owens. Alright, Zach finished fifth in pros. Then we have Andy Patton. Recognition, aye, from the Russell County School Board, fifth place in poetry, 2018-19 Forensic. Cassidy Smith. Presented Cassidy Smith, by the Russell County School Board, fourth place, serious dramatic interpretation. Very good, that's amazing. Dylan Mullins. Dylan had third place in humorous duo.
No, not yet.
And you have to have two of the humorous duos, and Skylar Robson. McKenna Jordan. Right, McKenna. Presented to McKenna Jordan, Russell County, by the Russell County School Board, third place in storytelling at the Forensic Tournament. Alright, Lily. Lily Sanders, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of second place in pros. Brienne Long. Presented Brienne Long, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of first place in PSA.
That's for FBLA, but yeah, original oratory was for Forensics.
We'll fix that. Alright, good for you.
It's fine.
Congratulations. One for the halls of Castlewood High School for the team, third place.
Ms. Jenkins, come, both of you. Now we have the FBI lights, second honors, Castlewood High School, Ms. Jenkins, the sponsors of FBI, and their parents. Jesse, Casey Bush, Lane Bush, Lauren Johnson, Abby Baker, Savannah Mead, Brienne Long, Toby Phillips, Randy Hughes, Nicholas Ford, Taylor Taylor, Brooke Travers, Molly Harnett, Chloe Mullins, Josh Powell, Phil, Chloe Jessup, Simon, I guess you want to put it, I don't know.
Again, lucky as principal in the county, I feel. I've got the greatest student staff in the county. I come up here every time, amazed by these kids and all the things they do, and I realize all the things that they go out and do daily in my hallways. Just a great group of kids. Can't say enough about them. Everywhere I go, if we travel somewhere, they're well behaved, they do what they're supposed to do, they compete well, so I'm very proud of all of them guys. Proud, very proud. That's what this campus is about, to be proud of, and I'm very proud of them. I'll turn it over to Ms. Sheen.
It's good to be here again. We do have a great bunch of children, hard workers, like she said. They pick their events early on, and they work with them with a passion, and they're up there a lot of times, a lot of times they're texting me on snow day and say, can we go up and work on our project? I mean, a lot of times they're the one that's pushing to do even more and better. So they go to region, and they win twenty first place, they win five second place, and they win three third places, and that's pretty impressive. Have this bunch, then they go to state, and we had... We had like ten first place, then we had second place, we had third place. The first and the second place, or the first and the second place competitors will go to San Antonio, so they'll represent, we have eighteen that will be representing in ten different events in San Antonio. So, very proud of them, they're working hard to earn their money, we can count on to do what they do today. Great bunch of kids, very proud of them.
We have some recognitions. Montana Southern. Presented to Montana Southern, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning second place in business ethics at the 2018-19 FBLA State Leadership Conference. Cole Jessup. Cole, presented Cole Jessup, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, second place in business ethics at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Hunter Hill. Presented to Hunter Hill, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, second place in American Enterprise at the 2018-19 FBLA State Leadership Conference. Josh, excuse me, Josh Hall, Castlewood High School, in recognition for taking the second place in the American Enterprise at the 2018 FBLA State Leadership Conference. Lilie Mullins. Second place in graphic design. Riley Harnett. Second place graphic designer. McCandless Type. Alright, presented McCandless Type, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in social media leadership conference. Brooke Travers. Presented Brooke Travers, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in social media leadership conference. Katrina Hughes. Katrina. Presented to Katrina Hughes, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning first place, introduction to business at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Nicholas Ford. Presented to Nicholas Ford, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in introduction to business at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Okay, Brienne, you received one. Okay, and that was in PSA.
That was first place, original oratory.
Yep.
Okay, let's try again. Presented to Brienne Long, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning first place in original oratory at the 2018-19 BHS Area Group One A Forensic. Zoe Phillips. Presented to Zoe Phillips, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in PSA, second place in community service at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Savannah Mead. Presented to Savannah Mead, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in 3D animation at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Abby Baker. Presented Abby Baker, yeah, from Russell County, by the Russell County School Board, first place 3D animation. Lane Bush. Presented Lane Bush, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in business financial lane. Lauren Johnson. Presented Lauren Johnson, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, first place in business financial lane. Casey Bush. Presented to Casey Bush, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, recognition of winning first place in broadcast journalism. Ginner Jessup. Presented to Ginner Jessup, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, recognition of winning first place in broadcast journalism. Break it down, guys.
You've now been all over, but everything's...
Alexis is an excellent student at Monique High School, and the logo that she has designed for our attendance initiative is an awesome logo. We're proud to have that logo, which incorporates another logo that we use for Russell County Public Schools, which also come from the marketing class at Monique High School. So it's great to integrate the two together, but she's a great design student, like you said, that in her marketing class, Alexis does great top line designs and does great work for her, so it's exciting to have this representative in our Monique High School.
Looking at this design, we are looking at the requirements by the Escalation Regulations by the federal government, chronic absenteeism. We're going to have a kickoff campaign next year for our chronic absenteeism program with all of our schools in the county, but this is a very important step, this is part of the marketing process, and we appreciate your work. So, presented to Alexis Fine, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of creating the winning Russell County attendance logo.
To the electors, we'd like to recognize students from Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, FBLA. I'd ask these students to come forward, we have sponsors that may be here, and parents of these students. Majora, Mike Blankenship, Katie Harris, Brett White, Jada Mullins, Madison Byers, Chloe Moschick, Madison Davis, Dawson Miller, Anthony Rappel, and Matthew Wood.
Again, another excellent representation of the business department, FBLA at Monique High School. We have a great group of students in our FBLA, we're the largest chapter in the UVA wise region, and we were represented at the state competition as well. Again, we don't have to worry about our kids, they're well behaved on the trip, and they have an excellent time as well. I will turn it over to Ms. Compton, so she can talk more about it. We had four different groups placed this year at state. Madison Davis was, she stepped out on Liam and did job interview this year. Our employees did banking and financial systems, and they put a great deal of work into case studies and practicing. Our young ladies, Jada and Madison, did business financial planning. They created their own business, created their logo, Jan wrote the actual report off of that, they did a great job. And then, we had a parliamentary procedure team placed forward in the state of Virginia, and they also put in tons of time, tons of work, and they practiced, so we're proud of each and every one of them.
Starting with Ace Ho. Presented to Ace Ho, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning fourth place in parliamentary procedure at the 2018 State Leadership Conference. Hannah Lynch. Presented to Hannah Lynch, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, fourth place in parliamentary procedure at the Monique High School. Brett White. Presented to Brett White, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, fourth place in parliamentary procedure at the 2018 State Leadership Conference. Katie Harris. Fourth place parliamentary procedure. Jada Mullins. And then, Jada Mullins, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning fourth place in business plan at the 2018 State Leadership Conference. Madison Byers. Presented to Madison Byers, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, fourth place business plan. Chloe Moschick. Fourth place business plan. Madison Davis. Presented to Madison Davis, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, third place in job interview. Matthew Hurt. Presented to Matthew Hurt, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, second place in parliamentary assistance. Ethan Rappel. Ethan Rappel, Monique High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of second place banking and financial assistance. Dawson Newt. Second place banking and financial assistance.
First chair members of the board. I want to thank each one of you for recognizing our students tonight. In all the years of my education, I've been standing around the board, dedicated, polite, mannerly, respected group of people, young people who have been out there in the locations through this year. Not only do we have students, as you all just saw from the other schools, that excel in academics, but we have many talented kids that are hands-on things that they have talent in and our instructors, I want to thank them for the effort that they put in each day for each one of these kids and the kids' efforts that they put forth this year that's been remarkable. I want to thank our three high school principals because the leadership that they show for their students at their home schools is a reflection on the students that we have at Russell County Career and Technology Center. And that leadership has shown in each day that I have had opportunities to work with our children. I'm going to let our instructors tell about each one of the accomplishments that they would have made. Some of our students have done things behind that they've discovered in straightforward procedures. Mr. Worms has never been that short on words, so he can fill us in. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brooks. Get Mr. Brooks as our advisor. We'll have Mr. Brooks go first.
For those of you who don't know about Skills USA, I'll tell you a little bit about it. It's a national organization of trade and industrial students, 340,000 nationwide. So it's a big thing. So we've got a state, it's quite an event as well. They fill up the Virginia Beach Civic Center. Two big halls, you've got hammers going, saws going, drills going, brick being laid, hair being done. It is an event to see. It's something to see. You really should see it. And these kids performed unbelievable under that pressure. I would, I would wheelender it, I guess. But they do a super job and it's no accident. These people I work with are grade eight, number one instructors. They do a super, super job and I'm lucky to be a part of it, I really am. So at district level, we had 22 contests that moved on to state level. We competed in 22 contests at district level. 16 of those moved on to state. That's just a contest. We took 22 students. We had two teams, Team Works team. That's something to see. That's a five hour long contest. They build a floor, they frame up walls, they do electrical, they do plumbing, they do masonry. It's really something to see. They placed third place. That's a team of four, four students. And we also had the crime scene team. That's three students in that one. That's an awesome contest as well. But we had, out of the 16 we took, we placed fourth or better in eight of those competitions. We had two fourth places, two thirds, three seconds, and a first, I think. So they performed super well. I say this every year, it was the best group we've ever taken up there. I say it every year, but it really honestly was, wasn't it? I mean, it was unbelievable. Y'all should be proud. Somebody, everybody in this room has done a wonderful job. A great bunch of young people. My student, Brandon Williams, who placed second in the bricklaying. It's a four hour competition and he had to lay up a brick and block one wall with a little design in it. Done a super job. I'd like to brag on him. He worked really, really hard. Thank you.
You ready?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm really proud of my, well, I love my school, first of all. Love our principal, love the staff that I work with, and I love my students and I try to show them every day. Our crime scene team placed second out of 14 teams at state level. It's a very, very competitive, they can lose or win by tenths of a point. So I'm very, very proud of them. They work really hard.
I'm welding instructor. Stone and Seth Smith, he's not here, he's at Dixie Stamp, not Dixie Stampede. He's at Dixie Stampede. He's on senior trip. Seth and, Seth Smith and Stone Stevens, they won first and second in district in welding, art sculpture. Stone won first in district, Seth won second, but we were able to take both to state. Seth won first at state, Stone got second at state. And again, like Miss Stenson said, the point system is about a thousand points and they count down to tenth of points on things. It was very, very close, so Seth did qualify for nationals. We'll take him to nationals and see how we do there. And again, just like they said, these guys, they work hard. It's just like a sport or any other competition. They work hard all year long to participate in these competitions and it means so much for life lessons. Things they're going to carry with them for the rest of their life. And I just want to thank, thanks to all the people they mentioned, but especially supervision and Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Aspin, and Dr. Brown for investing in these guys because it does take a lot of money and it's going to take a few dollars to go to national studios. Thanks very much.
Mr. Young, what's your feeling about the scholarship earlier?
Yeah, Seth and actually Stone also, that he's a junior, Stone's a junior, but Seth did win a full scholarship to Tulsa Welding School. It's one of the top welding schools in the nation. He's, will be going to the Florida campus starting in July. And we had a student that won last year. He just graduated down there on the full scholarship. So we're really proud of Seth, wish he was here to get all these accolades, but I'll pass them on to him. So he'll be going to Tulsa Welding School and Stone got a half scholarship for second, but next year, we've already been told right, he's going to get the full scholarship somewhere.
Very good. Lagan City. Lagan with us. Third place in job interview. Gary Hall. Gary was third team, excuse me, third place in Team Works. Devin Warren. All right, third place in Team Works. Dallas Taylor. Third place in Team Works. James Field. Third place in Team Works. They all play ball. Team. Dale Henson. Hey, here we go. Presented to Dale Henson, Russell County, excuse me, Russell County Career and Technology Center, excuse me, by the Russell County School Board. Recognition winning second place in crime scene investigation team in the state Skills USA competition. Ashley White. All right, Ashley. Presented to Ashley White, Russell County Career and Technology Center by the Russell County School Board. Second place crime scene investigation team. And it takes three. Dawson Dayden. Presented to Dawson Dayden, Russell County Career and Technology Center by the Russell County School Board. Recognition winning second place in crime scene investigation. Brandon Williams. All right, Br- presented to Brandon Williams, Russell County Career and Technology Center by the Russell County School Board. Recognition winning second place in bricklaying in the state Skills USA competition. Stone Stevens. Presented to Stone Stevens, Russell County Career and Technology Center by the Russell County School Board. Second place in welding sculptures. And Seth Smith, first place welding sculptures. Again, while they're doing that group chair and all chairs, the board has given me to go ahead and assess a couple of those travel plans, calls and so forth for FPLA and our Skills USA teams and also our activity.
Chair, we have a teacher that we'd like to recognize. We did recognize a resource officer last night who won an honor from the American Red Cross Celebration. He rose and then we got an email, I think it was the next day, and we had another staff person on that. So we're proud to bring her before you tonight, like that, Ms. David Gibson, Casswood Elementary School. Is that what you're not going to stand with her?
They are.
Presented to you, David Gibson, teacher at Casswood Elementary School by the Russell County School Board. Recognition winning Homemaker High School.
The last recognition certainly not least, but we do want to recognize our employee of the month. Our support employee was we, he was letting an elementary, he's unable to be here, so we're going to recognize him next month. But we are pleased to have our teacher of the month, Homemaker High School, Vanessa Dunham. Will you come forward? Ms. Dunham.
I'll read you a few notes that the nominee, nominee wrote down, Ms. Dunham. This is my first year having the pleasure to work with Ms. Dunham. I'm a completion teacher for a geometry and algebra class. I've learned that she is not only an asset to the math department, but to the school as a whole. Ms. Dunham has the ability within content information of her lessons and classes that I witnessed with such simplistic ease and temperament that every student fully participates in discussion and completion of assignments. Our students are comfortable asking questions and asking for help at any moment. They want to do their work and they want to do it correctly. I've seen their confidence, their self, their learning in her class because of the environment that she's established for her students. Along with her teaching skills and their willingness to learn and their success in geometry, I'm excited to see how well the students will do on the standards of learning assessment in geometry. Two classes that I have, that I share with her, I've never witnessed her sending a student to the office for any discipline or behavior issue, nor has she asked to introduce her for her. Ms. Dunham is an integral part of the proverbial backbone that makes Homemaker High School flow so well and so smoothly. Along with her responsibilities in teaching, Ms. Dunham manages our school suspension program, distribution plate, maintenance, collection of chrome books. She helps Del Jamerson raise men for the school baseball team and helps teach Google Asset Management at his school. Ms. Dunham accomplishes successfully on a daily basis along with being a full-time wife and mother and fighting personal battles with her own health. As a blessed faculty member of Homemaker High School, I know that many of us have different areas of responsibilities and we all seem to work hard. What Ms. Dunham does is stand out from the rest of us. And closes with thank you for the opportunity to recommend my company.
Hey, Dr. Brown, I think that concludes the recognition, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. We're at the delegation on the agenda, if you would please.
Yes, sir. We received contact from Mr. Kit Parsons, wishes to address the board.
All right. Parsons, if you would please, you have three minutes to complete, okay? Anytime you're ready, it's fine. Okay? All right, thank you.
As I guess all of y'all have heard, it's all over that the board wants to get rid of our principal and I think she's doing an excellent job and there's no real reason for them trying to get rid of her. We have a, in the public it's said that the school's split, but there's quite a few of you all that's from our school, ain't ya? Would any, would y'all care to stand a few support, Ms. White? We, and they have been a little, a couple of coaches that might not support her and one of them been our football coach who put a big article in the paper that just made a big stink for our whole community. And I think it was disgraceful and I think the board should, should have, you know, he should be apprehended for that, but I don't think nothing's ever come of it. And Mr. Boston thought it was a laughing matter. He started laughing in a closed session. I thought that was disgraceful and he, he said that, you know, it's just pitiful that a board member would laugh over a situation like this. And I've talked to Mr. Brown several times. He's been nice to Mr. Fletcher, Mr. McWiggy, talked to Jeff the other day and, but it's just, our, our school is, is improving. We've, we've not had a class that went through, I think since 2010, they said, that went from eighth grade, they graduated, had the same principal. And we have no stability and they want to run her off for no reason, no reason enough. And, and as I can see, we got quite a good turnout here in support of her and I appreciate y'all's time and the support of her. And could y'all give us any reason why you want to run her off?
Board's not going to make any, any comment. Just go ahead with what you need to complete, but the board will make no comment.
Okay. And why, all of our kids are here too, you know, you're all wanting to give, collect a, pull her up. Okay, and while all of our kids are here too, you know, you're all wanting to give a four-point, five million dollar field and give our kids a piece of art to play on, I don't think that's right either. Our kids deserve the same as any, any kid here in this county and kids are, our kids, I mean, we've, we've got great kids. We've, we've got kids, state champions this year and our kids work hard. They have, our football kids have to play on a field full of rock and we got the worst field, I, I, y'all have to agree, you might not say so, but we got the worst field in the county and all the stuff, maintenance has been not done at our school. And, you know, it, it's, it's a sad statement, our kids, our, if you, and I know you've seen the pictures of our wrestling room.
Just wrap up.
Anybody care to give me their three minutes? Thank you. And I know y'all seen the pictures of our, of our showers and our wrestling room, it's just crazy. And our kids, we, we have two state champions and a runner-up this year and, but all of our kids done wonderful. And they have to take a shower where I wouldn't want my dog in and it's, it's pitiful and it's a shame. And to, to look at these kids and say, hey, we want to give them a four mil, almost a five million dollar stadium and, but y'all go ahead and just do the best you can. It's just, it's not right and I don't think that you all make those decisions, it ain't going to turn out like you, like you want it to. Because our community stands behind our school and stands behind our, our principal and our kids. And that's what, that's what, that's why we even have a school. If it wasn't for the kids here, there'd be no need for a school board. There'd be no, it would be useless. So all these kids should be equal. I mean, our kids are as good as the kids everywhere else and on the football field, okay? The equipment was at, at the stool to put it, it hurt them, but we didn't do it because Wadner said that they, they wanted to keep their field there because of tradition, okay? Then, so they couldn't decide if they wanted the, a field there or a field at their new school. So we didn't get a field. And nothing else, just slap, just give us some crumbs when y'all are done. And, but I, I think I'm speaking for the whole community here. We, it's not, it's not acceptable to, it's not acceptable to run off a good administrator for no reason. She, our, our schools are clean, our, our kids are good, they, they have, our kids can go to her, tell her something's going on and she can take care of the problem, it's just got better. Ever since she's been here, our school's gotten better. And, and I, and if you, if you all will give her the chance, it'll keep getting better. And with, with, you know, just to get rid of her for no reason, it's, it's ridiculous. And, and I'm running for school board if any of y'all want to vote for me. I do give. Promise that I'll have our school and our kids in, 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 in my heart.
All right, good wrap up, you've already got an extra three minutes and no one else to sign up on it here, so if you could, wrap it up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you, y'all. Thank you.
Come on, sit back.
Uh, he said, uh, thank Jacobson and I D. And what I laughed about is when you said that the football field after the third quarter started wrestling and arguing themselves on the sideline. And we couldn't believe that. Is that not true, is anybody here, is that not true that our, that our kids would start fighting amongst themselves as, as the ballgame went on? We could be winning and then we, our, our school, we follow paces because our kids wasn't in condition. Is, I mean, you all been to our ballgame, y'all seen one happen, y'all played ball. And they come into wrestling practice the first day and they was puked because they wasn't in shape after coming out and football. That's a sad statement.
Why would you like to play on this?
Yeah, that's what we got, right there.
There are bigger ones that comes out of our field than this.
Our kids can get hurt on this.
And nobody cares about it.
Thank you, sir, I do appreciate your comment.
It's where the softball girls play on the field.
Softball field.
Dunham stopped the game last night because a girl from the other team almost fell in a hole.
But yeah, we want to send the money to another school instead of fixing what we've gotten now.
Our daughter was hurt on the softball field, making a lot of trouble. Had to go off to class and then she goes to physical therapy tomorrow.
And Homemaker's football boss wasn't putting in the paper that he didn't like bringing his team to Casswood because he's afraid that they get hurt.
Right, we understand, okay, we, we understand the board, we will make.
And Mr. Boss did laugh and thought it was a laughing matter about our, about our situation. And it's not, it's not a laughing matter, it's, it's serious.
Thank you, sir, I do appreciate your comment. All right, has the, board had the opportunity to review the bills and counts as presented? Would I take a motion to approve those bills and counts? Thank you, Mr. Secw, do I have a second?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boss. All right, any discussion by the board? All in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign, all right. All right, that's fine, that's fine. All right, Dr. Brown, if you would, take us through resignations, retirements and new personnel transfers, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have approved again resignations and retirements. The board has their broadcast on the screen.
All right. The board's had opportunity to review those, would I take a motion to approve the resignations, retirements?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Secw, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Secw, all in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. All right, Dr. Brown, new personnel transfers, please?
I guess there again, small list for board review, and again, it's on the screen.
All right, thank you. Just now I'll take a motion to approve the new personnel transfers. Thank you, Mr. Boss, do I have a second?
My second, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Secw, do y'all in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign and Mr. Boss will understand. All right, Dr. Brown, approval of tenure, please?
Uh, yes, sir, we have those individuals that have completed their fifth year and the board is required to approve their tenure at this point in time for the FY twenty school year.
All right, so I have motion to approve the tenure presented by Dr. Brown?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Secw, do I have a second? Thank you, any discussion by the board? All in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Second reading of policies. Our second reading of policies under consideration?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have two items this evening for action, items from the board. First one is the second reading of policies under consideration and request approval for these things. Again, the background is members of the VSBA, we've been periodically received, our policy updates to be examined by our board for implementation through our policy manual. These were presented to the board as an information item in April and before the board's eye for approval.
All right. Just now I'll take the motion to approve the second reading of policies under consideration.
Somebody?
Thank you, Mr. Boss, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Secw, all in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign, there it is. Health insurance, Dr. Brown, if you would, please?
Uh, yes, sir, the insurance committee has completed work on the insurance program for the FY twenty school year. Please to share that the committee recommends no premium increases for the FY twenty school year. Uh, subtle improvements to the insurance include five dollar charge for generic medications, a reduction of co-pay for doctors' visits from twenty-five to fifteen and for specialist office visits from thirty-five to twenty-five. Yes, that recommend through Westman, sir.
Board any comment? Now I'll take a motion to approve the health insurance presented by Dr. Brown? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion by the board? All in favor of seeing the five saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. All right, I think that takes us down to Newwood Holton Governor's School, Mr. Secw, I think we have a report for, sir?
Yes, sir, I appreciate this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board to give this report. Uh, we had our monthly governing board meeting at the Newwood Holton Governor's School on April sixteenth. It was actually our quarterly meeting. Among the many items that we considered during that meeting, we approved the school calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty with the first day of classes for the Governor's School to begin on August twelfth and tended to be the last day of class, it would be May twelfth, of course, that'd be changed as we have interruptions and so forth throughout the school year. Uh, we also voted to change the name of our courses Biology One and Biology Two based on Dr. Robinson's strong recommendation to Biology one oh one and Biology one oh two. Same course, just different names, but this puts us more aligned with the community college system and the four community colleges that we closely work with to get our credits to our kids. We also approved the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, a budget of one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, which reflects an increase of about six thousand dollars above last year's budget with a carryover sum of nine hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. This larger carryover, way larger than what we were expecting this year, is due to the fact that the community college system delayed the tuition reimbursement process as opposed to taking from ninety-seven percent tuition reimbursement down to seventy percent over the course of three years. We delayed that for one more year or so, we had a little extra money and again, as I mentioned before in these reports, we are allowed, unlike a regular school board, to carry over any leftover money to the next year mostly because the majority of our funds come in through tuition reimbursements, comes in the second part of the year, we would have the money to operate during the first semester and so forth. But anyway, we've got our budget approved and this budget was based on a higher fall enrollment and a consistent spring enrollment. So, so the governor's school enrollment is up and we're hoping that we're going to see a substantial increase over the next year or two. I've mentioned in the last couple of reports about the one-year moratorium that was placed on the Newwood Holton Governor's School in regard to starting new classes and such. Uh, this was done by the community college system in an effort to allow us a chance to adjust to the tuition reimbursement and some of the other issues that are affecting the credits that the governor's school and dual enrollment classes are able to get. And the one-year moratorium is now lifted according to Dr. Robinson and we're now looking at adding specific classes such as humanities, a public speaking class and political science class, all, all things necessary for college. We're also seriously looking into finally, and it looks like we may have the opportunity to provide some courses through the governor's school that our neighboring school divisions throughout our region are having trouble finding teachers such as chemistry, higher level math, foreign language. So we're hoping we're going to be able to make that a reality and Dr. Robinson has pledged completely to help these school systems in what we can in this. At least three of the community colleges that we work with are working towards accreditation with an organization called NASEP. That's the National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships. This, this organization is, is basically set up to help ensure that high school dual enrollment classes are as rigorous as those that are offered on community college campuses. And we've had a big issue about the rigor of classes, especially in dual enrollment, it has hurt the governor's school to some extent. Uh, a lot of times a student will opt out of governor's school and take a dual enrollment class, get the same credit and have to do way less work. The governor's school is specifically set up to handle students that are in the top five to ten percent of your seniors and, and your juniors, but not for everybody and they need to be hard, they need to be demanding to prepare the kids for college and also get those credits that, that we hand out. So that's going to help us be in, uh, with this NASEP is going to help us in that regard, we're hoping. Uh, Dr. Robinson also reported, and I'll, and I'll leave on this, on a new statewide initiative called Transfer Virginia, which is working towards making it a whole lot easier to transfer credits from two-year to four-year colleges, which would be a big help not only to dual enrollment of our students as well. Our next quarterly meeting will be held on June eighteenth and I'll have a report, Mr. Chairman, for you guys after that.
Thanks, sir, appreciate that. Thanks, sir, appreciate that. Sales tax is two eighty-eight, eight fifty-two, thirty-four. Maintenance report, Dr. Brown, anything to report on the maintenance?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Dr. Addison, his crew are out working hard, Mr. Chairman. HBAC is now becoming a traditional issue this time of year, we've had a couple of weeks we've had some warm weather, but we're plugging away, sir.
All right, board have any comment? All right. Which bench report, Dr. Brown?
Uh, everything is in budget and moving forward, sir, trying to draw closure to the FY nineteen school year and open up the FY twenty year.
All right. Board have any comment?
Yes, I would like to thank Castlewood High School and Ms. Jenkins and her faculty for our dinner this evening and I would like to thank everyone for coming. And I would especially like to acknowledge our teachers across the county. This is National Teachers Appreciation Week and I want to, I want each and all of you to know that we thank you from the bottom of our hearts and we hope that we can give you a little, a little boost, I guess, with the budget. But anyway, we thank you for everything you do and taking care of our students and such academic achievement. We thank you for you.
We'll see it, all right? All right, I think it takes you down to the future agenda items, Dr. Brown?
Uh, nothing at this time, sir.
Board have anything on future agenda items?
Uh, not mentioned the race program. Like to be interested to know from each of the schools, high schools, how much participation you had in it. Mr. Monkey, Michael, address.
I've got some bling area information on that as of right now, we've got about eighty-eight kids signed up for it.
That's wonderful.
I think brother by the board? Dr. Brown, the other thing, if we get the opportunity, if you could maybe check, had one of the cafeteria staff wanted to request, we look into recycling from the school. We have a lot of waste, I think, that we pre-recycle, maybe do something with, and ask that we look into that. So if you could check into that and maybe report back to the board?
Absolutely.
All right, delegation down on the agenda, Dr. Brown?
Uh, Sir, if I may, would you like to address the board?
I just, I just have a question quickly. Uh, I know that you've been working with Valid Health Fund, helping us with our insurance. My husband went and they stuck him with a big bill, I talked to Tammy a little bit about it and I know that you had said last time that you were working with them to formulate a contract or something. This, and my husband didn't notice, say no. He, he just wrote him a check and we're supposed to be getting that back, but I don't know if we will or not.
Well, do you, you know, get the bottom of the main, Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, if they ask, maybe if you kind of led like we did in the back, kind of give us a little view. We're, I think we're losing something, communication there between what we can and what cannot do, but a lot of need communication, so if you can kind of take it from there.
I understand, uh, you know, again, the bottom line is three things. We have a fifty-fifty plan right now. We have a one-dollar deductible, you have a twenty-seven hundred dollar out-of-pocket maximum and then after that is a hundred percent. That's period, okay? So those, those are the three things you always need to remember. They don't know our plan, they don't know the contents of our plan, they're not even interested in knowing what the contents of our plan are, okay?
We're kind of hurting, that's all we've got to go to, everyone here. I mean, are they gonna, are they gonna try to recognize us?
Are they gonna try to what?
Recognize our plan, I mean, we're.
Well, again, I, it's, again, it's twenty-seven dollar, twenty-seven hundred dollar out-of-pocket limit. It's a hundred percent after that, whether they choose to or not, I mean, again, it's twenty-seven hundred dollar out-of-pocket limit. The plan pays a hundred percent after that, which is, was actually a lot better than plans around us. Some of them around us are four thousand, five thousand dollar out-of-pocket limit. The fifty-fifty we're working on, trying to improve, uh, but again, this is in its infancy. We've had about nine months, ten months of data that we've been able to use so far. We've had about nine months, ten months of data that we've been able to use so far, and things are working, you know, the way we hoped they were, other than wood, excuse me. But it's too, it's still too early for us to make some big adjustments, yes, so hopefully this time next year, maybe we will. So that's why we had the subtle adjustments that I read earlier, just something positive, the fact that there's no increase in premiums that was approved by the board earlier. And again, you got a few things there that'll help when you have the actual office visit as well, so hopefully that'll help. But again, three things, fifty-fifty copay, four-hundred-dollar deductible, twenty-seven-hundred-dollar out-of-pocket, and then, you know, after that, it's fine. And if you do get that bill, you give us, call, come see Tammy, and we'll take care of it.
And I want to thank Tammy for everything she's helped me with.
Oh, absolutely.
She answers my questions, and she helps me in every way possible. My last question, has the board of supervisors approved our budget yet?
They're still working on their budget. Their budget cycle is different than ours. We're required by the Code of Virginia to submit a budget in need by March thirty every year. With that being said, that's real early in the cycle of things. If you were to look at the history of Russell County, normally the board supervisors will finalize their budget somewhere around the second or third week in June, they'll let us know. We'll have a call meeting, we actually have it on the agenda as a to-be-determined thing, but we'll have to have a call meeting so that we can approve again. It's like the chicken or the egg, which is first. So we have to provide, they have to respond, and we have to finalize and give that back to them. So anyway, that's kind of how it works. But to answer your question, no, not yet.
No.
I had to take my daughter, she's doing sports all through the past year, and she's missing her arm, so I had to take her, she's done physical therapy, Miss Barnes sent her to MRI, and when I went to the hospital medical room, which is valid, they told me that first it said, well, I don't think we're going to accept this. I'm like, what do you mean, I'm going to accept my insurance? And she said, well, we're, it's a Medicare plan, we're not really sure if we're going to accept that. And I told her, I said, well, my doctor's four hundred, it's paid fifty-three, plus we have the extra backup there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I had to sign a waiver that I would be responsible for now, because she's still, and they're like, we're bored, talking amongst each other, calling it, they're immune, and they say, we're not for sure if we're going to accept this.
Well, again, we can't.
I was sort of confused, thinking, this is my health insurance.
Sure, and again, we can't control what they say, and they don't know our plan. I mean, Tammy's worked hours and hours, the committee's worked hours and hours and hours on this. So they don't know our plan, we can't control what they have to say. So again, the bottom line is those three things, okay? And they, as far as waiver goes, if you really think about that, that's pretty common practice across the board, regardless if you have the most expensive insurance in the world or what. Normally, one of the documents that you have to sign is a, is like a three-sentence thing that basically says, you may be held accountable for any outstanding balance, and that's a pretty common instrument also. But again, I want you to feel comfortable with it. You got any problems, you know, call her, me, or Tammy, and we'll fix it.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons, head around at the field, you've seen some of the rocks off the field and seen the stores. I'm just curious, I'll show you pictures of the Sagwood Castle House, the elementary school. I'm just curious, I know it's my back and forth, but I have the same thing, we have several Castlewood kids here, who attend the school, several Castlewood parents who pay taxes there. I just want to use your plans still, the bill, whatever, for Castlewood. So, have the courage to tell them. We're here.
What?
Welcome out on both sides.
I just wanted to, I looked at the board supervisors, we didn't mind it, get the ball up there, and I think that they're seeing the concerns of this proposal, and I don't think that they, while they're thinking that they would not support your proposal, could be on any of that. I don't think they would.
I don't know what the board supervisor is going to do. I don't know, I can't answer something like that. Only thing I can tell you is, every one of these board members has been on here for a little over three years, and I think we've accomplished quite a bit. We have accomplished everything we want to, but we can't tell you why things got in the shape that they're in. We wasn't on the board then. We've been here three and a half years, and during that time, I think, Mr. Cook, if you liked, if you can explain what they, what we have received, not just our home acre, let them just got a vacay. We've gave as we could give, and we will continue to give as we can give, and I can't tell you why we got in that shape, I don't know. I wasn't on the board, I've been here three years, okay? That's all I can tell you, is what I have done, and this board has done in three years. That's it. I mean, what the board of supervisors does from this point, I don't know. I mean, I understand your equipment, I understand your features, I understand the same thing at Lebanon, I can show you the same thing you're showing me, and that, I can't help that. I don't know when it got in that shape, you know? Like I said, I've been here three years, that's all I can tell you.
And I agree, now, I'm the same as, can't get Lebanon, four-point time in sports conflict in Castlewood, it's just not fair. We've got to split it.
Speaking just about the football field, and my feeling is, and just working with the board of supervisors, and they've always done us right for the, basically, the three years that we've been on, it's a good working relationship, a lot better than any time in the past. I really feel that they will make the right decision for equality for all the schools. I really do.
I can't wait, I can't wait, I think you might like to have the same.
I really feel that way. I've talked to a couple, you know, but just, but I think they will, you know. That in itself, though, is not going to solve the problem at Castlewood Football Field this year, okay? So everybody, you know, we're going to have to try to fix what we've got, and, you know, that's just what it is, we're too late in the game. But my opinion, you know, it's just my opinion, I feel like the board of supervisors will make the correct decision for equality for all the, for all the county schools.
I have a question. What exactly is your plan for the football field for us? I guess last year we were supposed to get something, and all we got was irrigation system.
Well, that's, that's correct, you're right.
When we're supposed to get remedial grass last year.
We couldn't get it all done in one season, and like Mr. Reilly has just said, tell me in twenty years, who else has tried to fix our football field?
And our field path has a tarbo root, from under the roots.
We understand that, too. We understand that, too.
I have a question for the board. If the board has had three and a half years and they are still trying to make progress, why are they not giving our principal more than three years to make progress?
And I think if y'all were to vote that Bob Gibson spent out of his pocket thirty, thirty-some hundred dollars, he's got a receipt, and he was supposed to be reimbursed, and he has never been reimbursed, and that's not right for him to do that, for to put wild man's honor at our school. And I think that y'all ought to vote and give Bobby's money back.
What? Would you like to explain it?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. That occurred apparently, as you shared with me, in 2014.
Yes.
Gibson, accurate, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 2014. I wasn't here. I can't speak to exactly who was and who wasn't here as far as individuals here, I don't believe anybody.
Yes.
Let me have to take the addresses.
Mr. Bostick and Mr.?
Okay, but illegally, we, I'd be more than happy to look at it, if you bring me the receipt, we can look at what the procurement requirements are, and I'm more than happy to look at it, as you have taken your own personal money and invested it in our school system. Thank you, first of all, but, you know, again, that's something that you didn't have to do, maybe at the time you felt you did. Again, I can't speak to those decisions back then, Mr. Gibson, but I'm more than happy to look at that, and if we can do something, I believe the board will be more than open to help you with that. If you get that to me, I'll be, again, more than happy to look at it for you, okay?
Okay.
Got one more question. In regards to your statements that the board is here for the school, but we have one board member currently walks out, and one of our representatives is trying to talk, how can we sit there and say the whole board is for our school?
That's disrespectful.
That's disrespectful.
Very disrespectful.
Can we see something about that? You know, we're trying to get help, we're trying to acknowledge what we're trying to get here, but he walks out, and Bob cuts the talk. How is that helping us?
Well, I can't speak for any other board members, same as they can't speak for me. As I said last month, and I'll say it again, I'm not for Lebanon, I am for the Russell County. I listen to you, you listen to me, please. I am for Russell County, every corner of our school system. I am overwhelmed at the fact that we don't have the youth forty-jones now, that we're finally getting some restrooms. To me, that was, that's huge. I can't and will not, you know, say what others feel up here, that this isn't board. I have my opinion, they have their opinion. We may not agree, and a lot of times we do not agree, but I think we all have the best of Russell County at heart, and that's all I can say. I will not comment on what another board member, on any situation, does or does not do. Okay, that's about it, as good as I can make it.
I understand. I've said on several boards as well, but that is completely disrespectful.
No, as you mean, I don't.
But you're the chairman of the rest. Or am I? You're the chairman of the rest.
I am. All right, I think, yes, ma'am.
So, I'm one of the Castlewood students who has never been a board member, made it here at any height, actually, but I am one of the students who is committed to helping my teachers, supporting my teachers, and my principal. She has bought tons of stuff for her children. We have came in multiple mornings, we have candy canes on our lockers. We had so much stuff that's been given to us, not by other people, but Miss Lila. Miss Lila has bought us S.O.L. shirts past years, and she's buying some more this year. She has gave and gave and gave for her children, she's bought prom tickets, she's bought everything we need when we didn't have it. If our parents couldn't afford it, she was the first one to offer. The first year she was there, me and my sister couldn't afford to have our physicals taken, and she paid for them. She has done that not for just us, but for multiple students. Yet, a lot of us might not disagree when push comes to shove, when she wants to punish us for our wrongs doing, but what teenager does? I'm more than sure if you give a survey of any student, when their parent disciplines them, are they happy with it? No. If your teacher disciplines you, are you happy with it? No. But whenever it comes up to when you graduate, if you look back at the discipline that you've been given, you accept it, and then you are thankful for it. I will graduate next year, and I will look back on the teachers and my principal who have supported me and not only showed me that, hey, I can't go into this world and make decisions and not have consequences. And if you look around, half these students were supposed to come here for an award. Then they found out that their principal was up for grads and could be taken away for us, and we stayed. I drove all the way here, I didn't even attend on coming, but I heard my principal could be taken away from me, and I decided that was an important matter. And honestly, if stuff around our school probably wouldn't be kept, because, hey, we shouldn't tell our children this, they don't need to know about this. Half that whole student body, or probably even all of them, would have been here to support her. We might come along, and we might say, oh, Miss Lila's rough on us, she's tough on us, she needs to go with you, that's not right. But if you come down to the bare minimum of how she helped you, what did you learn from her, and is she truly there to help you? We would stay, and we would support her. And if you take her away, then what's that showing us? We have had how many different principals in the past five years? I would be the first, would be first class to graduate with the same principal from eighth grade. She has not only been here for high school, she also worked in the elementary. She has dedicated half of her life to the high school, elementary, and copper group because she supports the Castlewood students. She watched half of us grow up, and she will continue to watch us grow up. And I can bet, even after you take her away, if that's what you wish to do, she will come to our games, she will support us, and she will still be our number-one fan, because at the end of the day, she's the one that cares. She's the one who struggled for our success, and she is the one who's done what she has. She cares, and of all our principals we've had, she's cared the most. Five.
All right. Dr. Brown, I think that takes us down to future calendar items, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Cumpf shared earlier, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. With the end of the month, on the thirtieth, we'll have our retirement and thirty-year service dinner here at the school board office at five o'clock, and that is a precursor to the seven o'clock graduation ceremony, which will be at the middle school. On the thirty-first, that is a Friday, the last day of school. Second is graduation, we'll start the day at Castlewood, then Lebanon and Home Acres at seven. The July board meeting, we'll need to change that, because that Thursday, the first Thursday is the fourth, so I'll make the recommendation to the board at the June board meeting, but most likely just the following Thursday. The July twenty-second, or June twenty-third is our VSBA Conference on Education in Richmond. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to have to have a special college meeting to finalize the FY nineteen fiscal year budget and the FY, start the FY twenty budget, and that'll have to be determined once we get back to the board supervising, but most likely the last week or week before in June.
Does the board have any additional future calendar items? All right. Next school board meeting will be June sixth, five o'clock, I believe, detective, six-thirty for the regular session. Dr. Brown, anything for other?
Again, on that date, Mr. Chairman, the board will have a four-thirty work session finalized, the evaluation year for superintendent, and that's all I have to say.
The board have any additional? All right, this time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Thank you, Mrs. Cumpf, have a second? Any discussion by the board? In favor of signature five saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Thank you.